Okay, good afternoon. I'm calling the planning commission meeting of June 2, 2016 to order. First item would be the roll call. Ms. Rodriguez, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Thompson. Here.
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 Here. Here. Okay, now we'll go to some preliminary matters. Ms. Galarte, are there any requests for continuances, withdrawals, postponements, or addition of ex-agenda items?
No, Chair Campinella, we have no requests.
Okay, any announcements or appeals to talk about?
The only announcement is next week's meeting of June 9 has been canceled.
Next item would be the minutes of March 18, 2016. Amendment to those minutes for one minor item, I think. Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes, it's the amendment of one minor item. There is also a duplication of an entry that the second entry has been omitted, and that was on a public speaker. Enter twice.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? If not, could I have a motion to approve the minutes of March 18 as amended?
Someone?
Yes.
Just wanted to mention that I was absent, so I won't be voting on those minutes on the 18th.
Okay. Second, please.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Next, we'll review the minutes of May 5, 2016. Were there any questions or changes from the commissioners? This is Commissioner Pujol.
Okay, yes, I also needed to abstain on that one, so I'd be abstaining.
Okay. Any other questions, comments from the commissioners?
I have to abstain as well. I would think I was absent.
I'm sorry.
I was absent.
Okay, thank you. If there are no other questions, can I have a motions to approve the minutes of May 5?
So moved.
We have a first and a second. Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we'll go to any comments from members of the public on an item not on today's agenda. Do we have any requests, Ms. Galarte?
We do not.
Okay, and we've had no letters that came in on items not on the agenda or any correspondence?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we'll go to our first item, which is a consent item, an application that we'll look at with Ms. Broadduson. Okay?
Do you wish to have a staff report?
Well, are there any comments that you would like to make, or we can go right to consent if that's fine with the commission?
Sure, we're just, sometimes you waive the staff report and sometimes you...
Okay, are there any commissioners that would like to discuss anything on this item? If not, can I have a motion for approval on this consent item?
I move to waive the staff report and approve the, make the findings for this application.
Okay.
Second.
And we have a second. Any discussion on the motion? There is none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, the next item will be a substantial conformance determination. And Ms. Broadduson, I'll call you on this one to give the staff report. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Campinella and Commissioners Kelly Broadduson with Community Development. The project I'm presenting today is for a project site at 1964 Los Canoas Road, also known as St. Mary's Seminary Retreat Center. We have been, the city has been receiving inquiries for appropriate uses at the site, and staff is here today to request input from the planning commission on one of the potential users. Here is a map, which shows you where the site is in relation to the city. It's on the very most northern point of the Santa Barbara boundaries, and it's just north of Schofield Park. The project site is approximately between 33 acres, 35 acres, at the northern boundary of the city, in the A1 single-family residential zone, with a general plan designation of low-density residential. And here, okay, here is a slide showing the existing buildings on site. You can see the gym, the gym building is to the northern edge of the slide, and the driveway is to the right of the complex of buildings that wraps around down to Los So there was a CUP approved by the County of Santa Barbara in 1962 to construct and operate a seminary. Subsequently, in 1968, the property was annexed into the city of Santa Barbara. In 1971, the city also approved a new gymnasium. And St. Mary's has stated that there have been ongoing operating uses as a retreat and training facility on the site. The existing buildings, the existing permitted conditional-use permit buildings are a dormitory for 80 people, a residence for six to eight people, a guest house for 30 to 40 priests and/or relatives, a church building with a maximum capacity of 280 people, parking for approximately 60 cars, and a number of administrative and ancillary buildings. The request before us today is to determine if the proposed residential treatment facility is in substantial conformance with the existing conditional-use permit. So the proposed request is for a residential treatment facility for a maximum of 40 clients staying from 30 to 60 days, a maximum of 24 full-time employees. Clients would not have cars on-site, and there would be 60 parking spaces that exist on-site that would serve primarily employees and guests. There's been a request by a company called Access Treatment to determine if their use would substantially conform for the existing conditional-use permit for the St. Mary's Seminary Retreat Center. Staff felt that this was appropriate to gain more input from the planning commission and the public. Planning Commission guidelines allow staff to determine, to make the determination of We have received letters of concerns, concerned people are concerned with fire hazards and an evacuation plan, and we have Jim Austin from the Fire Department here to answer any questions. If there would be any improvements to the existing buildings, a building permit process would be required. They'd be going through the building permit plan check process, and also they'd have to comply with the fire code at that time and make any upgrades that would be necessary. An evacuation plan would be required, and the city is currently, the site is currently served by city, water, and sewer. Staff thinks that the use could potentially conform to the existing use, given that it appears to be less intense than some of the historic and allowed uses on the site. And per the planning commission guidelines, there are instances where staff feels that more formal input would be helpful from the planning commission in order to make findings of substantial conformance. And sometimes it is also appropriate to provide notice to the interested parties and surrounding property owners to inform them that this discussion will take place. Once staff has received input, then a determination will be made, and a letter will be provided to the applicant and the commission. The goal of today's discussion is to receive input from the planning commission on the request for the residential treatment facility, to occupy the existing buildings at the site. This is also a time for public comment, and we have received three public comment letters which have been provided to you. So the basic question of today is, does the proposed residential treatment facility conform to the existing conditional-use permit? So we'll be hearing from the potential applicant for this new use, and we also have Dan Gullett here from Public Works Transportation Planning, and we have Jim Austin from the Fire Department, and John Kikekendell is the applicant that will be making the presentation. And that concludes staff's presentation today.
Okay, thank you. Can we hear from the applicant, please?
Good afternoon. My name is Sam Deacon. I'm the chief operating officer for Access Treatment Centers. I have a master's degree in psychology from Pepperdine University in 2011, and an additional master's degree in marriage and family therapy in 2013. I've been working in the treatment world for about 10 years. Access aims to offer quality treatment to small, discreet groups with as little distraction as possible. We feel that this property is perfect for that. It's a passion of mine, because I also am from Santa Barbara, so I'd really like to offer that service to the citizens here. I want to introduce Carly Dollin, who is one of our lead clinicians. She can talk a little bit more about what we do at Access.
My name's Carly Dollin. I have a degree in clinical psychology from Antioch University. I've been working for Access for a few years, and what we do is offer individual therapy, group therapy, art therapy. We also have a big spirituality component in our program. It's been founded that spiritual awakenings really treat addiction in the best way possible. There's a lot of underlying trauma as well, and we feel that this seminary is a perfect place for clients to really heal. Thank you.
And this is Megan, our compliance director.
Hi, I'm Megan. I have been working for Access for a few years as well. I have a BA in psychology with minors in philosophy and criminal justice. I have gotten several facilities licensed and joint commission certified. The amount of laws and regulations that surround a facility such as Access that we hope to have here are extensive, and I put in a lot of work in keeping everything up to code. I know that there was some concern about us underusing the property and potentially putting less clients in there and then kind of ramping it up. The licensing process from the state does not allow that. Everything is submitted and regulated, so...
Okay, thank you. We have some speaker slips from the public, which I'd like to go to now. Each member of the public could have two minutes. There'll be a clock with a countdown there at the podium. So I've got three speaker slips, one from Paul Henderson. Paul, would you come up, please? Repeat your name for the record.
Need glasses for everything. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairperson and council members. My name is Paul Henderson, and I'm a neighbor of this project. Thank you very...
Excuse me, could you raise the microphone so that your voice is picked up better? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. I am opposed to granting a substantial conformance determination either positively or negatively, and I have two quick points. I guess what is missing in this discussion so far is that the original CUP is nowhere to be found, so on that basis are my comments. The applicant's statement of similarity between quote "aspiring priest" end quote and "addicts" is very difficult to comprehend. Addiction is a disease, and studying to become a priest is not. This proposal is a change of use. Secondly, and quite simply, no CUP, no approval. What did this document prohibit and what did it allow? A seminary is not a for-profit enterprise. This proposal clearly is. It's a commercial business in a residential zone. It warrants more scrutiny and certainly more input from nearby residents, and perhaps a change in zoning is necessary. And again, no CUP, no substantial conformance determination, because this would be confirming the proposal to something that presently does not exist. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Ray Smith, and they will be followed by Michelle Snyder.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Ray Smith. I'm speaking on behalf of the Board of, excuse me, the Board of Directors of the Mission Canyon Association regarding this project. A letter expressing our concerns has already been sent by our president, Carl Hutterer. I'm speaking as chair of the Mission Canyon Association's Fire Committee, a committee that wrote the first community wildfire protection plan within the county. I should also note that I'm an elected member of the Board of Directors of the Santa Barbara Fire Safe Council, but I must emphasize that I'm speaking today for the Mission Canyon Association Board of Directors. The board is extremely concerned about a potential determination of substantial conformance without a thorough investigation of possible environmental and public impacts of the proposed change of use for the following reasons. First, the facility in question is located in a very high-fire-risk zone that has experienced three devastating fires since 1964, and fire is becoming an increasing problem because of our drought. You visited this site. I hope you realize when you visited the site that the entrance and exits to the site, either from the west via Mission Canyon or from the east past Schofield Park, crosses a narrow, essentially one-way bridge. Second, we have learned a great deal during the last half-century, that's the time elapsed since the original 1962 CUP, about both making structures and communities more fire-safe. You probably know chapter and verse about the numerous laws to make structures more fire-safe. Less has been written regarding how to make communities more fire-safe, and it's a community issue that our association wishes to bring to your attention.
You have 10 seconds. Thank you.
Considering that this CUP is 54 years old, we respectfully request that you continue the agenda to a future meeting and allow for a more thorough examination of the issues of both site and community fire safety. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker will be Michelle Snyder.
I'm Michelle Snyder, and I'm here as the owner of 1972 Los Canoas Road, as well as a parent of a young adult who requires care from a residential treatment center or an inpatient treatment center on a regular, ongoing basis. My initial concerns were for the fact that if I were to leave my child in a residential treatment center there above our home, she's a runner, as many people in treatment centers are. She would run, given any chance possible. Being able to find her within the national forest, I feel, is slim. Not to mention the fact that if she were to head into the homes, she's able to break into them. She will steal driver's licenses, cars, firearms. She'll break into people's internet. She'll steal their identity. If she were to swallow a screw, there is no efficient way for the paramedics to get up that hill and get her down to Cottage Hospital. If she were to get a hold of floor cleaner and swallow that, again, no way for the paramedics. So now the safety of a resident at that unit is in huge jeopardy. Not to mention the fact that the homeowners in the local area are now in jeopardy. Anytime my child is at home, I am in danger. The rest of my family is in danger, my neighbors are in danger, and my friends are in danger. My friends will not come to my home unless they put their purses in the safe, because my daughter will take their money, their driver's licenses, and their credit cards. We need to think about having a safe place for people who require treatment centers, where they're easily able to get medical care...
10 seconds, please.
...as well as access to hospitals, and they're not able to harm the general public. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, thank you. Denise Frey, you're giving your two minutes to Jan Vanderford, is that correct?
Yes.
Denise, you're here. Okay. All right, so our last speaker will be Jan Vanderford, and Jan, you will have four minutes.
Good afternoon. Hello, my name is Jan Vanderford. I'm a neighbor of St. Mary's in Schofield Park. Thank you for the opportunity to respond to this issue today. St. Mary's was allowed to build their seminary by agreeing to operate under a conditional use permit issued by the county 54 years ago, in 1962. No copies of this conditional use permit have been located recently, but efforts continue to find it. The applicant has asked to be allowed to operate under the terms and condition of this missing conditional use permit. How can they possibly adhere to the constraints in the missing conditional use permit without knowing what's in it? And while they have not yet done so, the planning staff is asked to determine if it's in conformance with the condition of this missing use permit. Again, how can they know it's in conformance or not with this missing document? On another point, we're here today to discuss if the applicant conforms to the condition of the missing use permit. We're not here to judge if St. Mary's has adhered to their use permit for these last 50 years. We're asked to judge if the applicant conforms to the original use permit. That's a 54-year-old document, and use has, use has well changed from that original conditions. We don't know what's in that document. Finally, this applicant's project represents a change in use for the property. A change from a nonprofit religious organization to a for-profit enterprise, from a seminary to addiction recovery business. Despite the applicant's attempt to paint these the same color, they are fundamentally different. This warrants, this new use warrants for review of a conditional, a new conditional use permit. For these reasons, I request that you direct the staff to reject this application for substantial conformance. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other speakers or speaker slips? Staff, would you like to respond to any of the comments now or wait for our questions? Any of the public comments, would you like to respond to those, or you can wait for our questions?
I would just like to respond to the conditional use permit. We haven't found the actual document. For example, now if the city does a conditional use permit, we have a resolution, and we have a staff report, and we have minutes. We have been able to obtain, and it's attached to our staff report, the staff report from the 1960s that established the conditional use permit, as well as a letter from the county that a conditional use permit had been granted dated same time as the staff report. We're referencing the staff report. So the fact that we feel, I mean, there is a valid conditional use permit on the property, that we can't find the document doesn't invalidate the fact that there is a conditional use permit. Over time, the property has gone from more of a seminary to a retreat facility, but when we did find also the document for the annexation, and when the city annexed in 1967, the annexation says, the property, the ordinance that created the annexation says that they will connect to city's sewer service, and also that the approved annexation is with a conditional use permit on a lot now that exists with A1 zoning. So there was also recognition at the time of annexation that a conditional use permit existed on the property.
Okay, do we have some cop, is that in the little stack that we received here? Did we, okay. Okay, any other comments at this point? Okay, Mr. Vincent, perhaps, given some of the items that were discussed, do you have any guidance for us today that you'd like to share in our deliberations on this topic? Thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the application or the purpose of this hearing is to receive the commission's comments regarding the request that staff determine that the proposed use is a substantial conformance to the use allowed under the conditional use permit. The conditional use permit was issued by the county, and was issued for a seminary use. The, you have uses, the proposed use is not a seminary, so that is a question for whether or not the proposed use fits within the, either definition, or if it's, if it's a defined term within the county's ordinance. The, I haven't seen the county's ordinance as it existed in 1962. I have seen a copy of a county ordinance from 67 that references monasteries and some churches as being potential conditional uses. I don't know if the county basically put the seminary use within a church or a monastery. Haven't found that out. It would be useful for the commission to provide comments regarding your consideration of whether or not the proposed use has a similar or dissimilar intensity of use when compared against the use that was approved by the county. That would be, you know, an intensification of a conditional use is not allowed under the city's zoning. The, the other issue or a comment I would make as far as framing your thoughts and discussion is that, to the degree that the conditional use granted by the county differs from zoning standards and allowed uses within the A1 zone, this property and its use is potentially, it would be a legal non-conforming use to the extent that the uses are, were either an allowed use under the county zoning at the time, or were an allowed use under the conditional use permit at the time. Those would continue on as legal non-conforming uses within the city of Santa Barbara upon the city's annexation. So from my perspective, and I'll let the community development staff elaborate upon this if they have other topics they'd like the planning commission to focus on, I think, as I said, your thoughts and considerations regarding the potential intensity of the use and how it relates to the intensity of the use that was granted under the conditional use permit, that would be a topic that I think would be useful for staff to hear in order to make their determination. The commission's thoughts regarding whether a residential treatment facility is substantially similar or substantially conforming to a seminary use. Regarding comments made by the members of the public, the, I think that to respond to the comments regarding that there's no CUP, that may be the case. We may not actually have a conditional use permit. I would also proffer the possibility that the staff report and the letter issued by the county may have amounted to a conditional use permit as of, at the time in 1962. I don't know, but at that, I think that that is something that we as staff will need to investigate before making a determination of whether or not this proposed use substantially conforms. I concede that the public comments that say, we don't know if this proposed use conforms or does not conform to the conditions of the conditional use permit. If there, if, if we don't have the conditional use permit, I don't know how we get to that determination. If this application, the staff report, and the county's letter affirming the grant, the... If this application, the staff report, and the county's letter affirming the grant, the approval of a conditional use permit, in effect, is what amounted to a conditional use permit in 1962 for this county of Santa Barbara, then we'll take that information, use it, and make the evaluation. But I think that it, you know, your comments regarding, or even direction to staff to confirm whether or not the documents that we have to date amount to a CUP or not would be valid comments.
Mr. Chair. Just for your consideration also, so in our thought process of whether, assuming there's a conditional use permit for, as represented in the 60s, whether this use would be more or less intense. So we look to our current zoning ordinance and what this use could possibly be comparable to, and we believe that it falls under like a community care facility. And we have granted one in the past on Montecito Street, it was part of the cottage care treatment facility. And the parking requirement for a community care facility is one parking space per two bedrooms. I don't know how the property, if it goes forward, would be configured, but I'm assuming that would amount to one per two patients. So the parking requirement would be 20. So in our mind, we felt that as far as the parking needs for this property would be more than adequately met with the existing property, assuming, you know, that the 60s spaces are all legal. And we also looked at transportation, looked at the traffic generation, and based on the number of employees and the people that would be served will not have cars, we also felt that the traffic that would be generated based on the presumed CUP would be significantly lower in that some of these retreats that have occurred, from what we understand, had 100 or more people at a time. So we felt that this use would, potentially could be found less intense than the existing use on the site. Just a couple of things to consider.
Any other comments from Mr. Vincent or staff this time?
I'm available for your questions.
Thank you. Okay. So why don't we take it to questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Higgins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So at some point, I think the, Ms. Broaddus, and you said the potential applicant, you referred to the access as the potential applicant, so that just made me think what the balance of the process is for this particular group in terms of the rest of their permit submittals, if you perhaps get positive comments on this today in terms of its compatibility with the, maybe, or maybe not, priorly or previously issued CUP. So there's another submittal ahead of them, and, or explain to me, and where I'm going with that is, does this city obviously has the staff, sorry, the ability to attach conditions to this SCD or no?
Commissioner Higgins, the process could either be that staff, after your input, finds the use in substantial conformance, then their process would be, depending on the level of changes to the exterior of the building, could need design review, could need, would definitely need a building permit because they'll need to be doing upgrading and interior improvements. Design review could add, they don't typically add land use conditions, they could add conditions as far as the design. If we do not find the project in substantial conformance, then it would be an application for a conditional use permit. So going through the city's, you know, 30-day review process, application, review by the planning commission, and a new CUP.
So there's no mechanism in place now with SCD to attach conditions of approval or other performance measures to the SCD?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I would submit that if you feel that additional conditions of approval are necessary in order to make the proposed use substantially conforming to the permitted use, then that says to me that it's not a substantially conforming use.
All right, I get where you're going with that. I guess my question is with regard to fire safety and the applicants that have, I'm sorry, the neighbors that have raised that issue, to what degree today, if this project were coming to us, would other fire-related design mitigations, for lack of a better word, be a part of the project, another access route? Or what, what are we talking about? What is, and maybe the, I guess I'm curious about your points with regard to fire issues, but you didn't raise any specific design considerations. So I don't know what you mean by fire-related safety. It's a brick building, it's gone through fires, it seems like it's survivable, but I guess I'm concerned about that issue. So maybe the gentleman from the fire department could speak to that.
Mr. Chair, commissioners, depending on the, well, okay, let me, a little perspective of the existing site. It currently meets our fire access standards. It's got a 20-foot or greater than 20-foot driveway. We can maneuver around up in the property, and the last two fires we have, and with great success. The, as far as getting up there and the paramedics, I'm not aware of us ever having a problem getting in and out of there, although, I'll be honest, I didn't go back and look at those kind of things, but I can get that information for you. But I'm the supervisor of the prevention bureau, so if the engine company had, or if an AMR medic unit had an issue with it, it would come to me for follow-up, and we just haven't had any complaints in all the years I've been here. As far as the construction, the existing construction, it would still be considered, in today's code, non-compliant. What we have in the building code is Chapter 7A, and that's construction materials that are specifically for high-fire designated areas. That being said, for a 50-year-old building, it is substantially fire-resistant, but some of the areas that are vulnerable are windows, which is typical in any house up there. If there's single-pane glass, that's usually the weak point in the high winds that we have that are typically followed with our large-fire events, that's usually the area of failure, and then embers intrude, you know, from that direction. But the way to increase or to meet today's level would be driven by a construction permit, and that would be also dependent on what is the scope of the construction permit. If they do exterior upgrades, then they will be subject to 7A requirements. If they do interior upgrades, if they don't do any addition to the building, but they do tenant improvements inside, so moving walls around, demo work, upgrading the HVAC, things like that, then they would be subject to our sprinkler ordinance that states if you do 50% or more tenant improvement as compared to the existing square footage, then an automatic fire sprinkler system would be installed. If they added any square footage, it would invoke our current sprinkler ordinance. So those are the mechanisms, although what we've reviewed so far has not been that detailed, so I don't, I don't know the answers to when we would, you know, get to increase the fire safety. But as the site stands, we do have access, we have water up there, and it meets our needs.
So it does sound like you haven't received a building permit, submittal of construction documents, so you can't really tell, but it does sound like you do possibly have the mechanism in place to ask, require sprinklers and/or window change-outs and other fire-related improvements, and at this point, you don't see a need for a secondary access?
No, we don't, we don't have a requirement in the fire code that requires secondary access. We, you know, we require turnarounds and things like that, which, again, they have in place. And as far as if they were to do any tenant improvement, the existing driveway or road, if that's what you want to call it, in the parking lot meets our access and turnaround standards, and they have a hydrant up there, so.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. So just to follow up on my original question to staff about the rest of the submittal requirements, we don't necessarily have the ability to, or they require a traffic study third-party, or is that something you can still require of them to help you make this determination? Or are you planning on relying on what's been submitted, and that's in the form of the applicant representations?
Chair Campanella, Commissioner Higgins, at this point, we don't have very precise information about what the existing uses are and what the traffic generation from the existing uses has been. What we understand from the proposal is there would be a lot less people overnight there and a limited number of staff there that would be staggered throughout the day. The patients there would be there for 30 to 60 days, they'd be dropped off, so we would expect fairly low trip generation, mainly employees coming to and from the site once a day, and the applicant is saying those trips are staggered throughout the day, so outside of peak, so we would actually expect the peak traffic generation to be lower than historic, and average daily trips to be within the range of the historic uses.
So how do you get to the point of substantiating that a change of use permit is not required if really the trigger is parking? You're going to rely on your own internal assumptions about the use or an IT manual with regard to trip generation or other uses in the city, but you're not going to be able to necessarily enforce those because you don't have, as Mr. Vincent said, a new CUP condition that you can attach because the city doesn't do that with SCDs?
Correct. So we do have the city traffic model with trip generation rates in the traffic model. We don't have specific trip generation rates for things like seminaries, but we do have offices and other similar facilities. So the kind of trip generation we would expect is a maximum of 1 a.m. average peak-hour trip per employee, and an average of 1 p.m. peak-hour trip per employee. Again, over time, there have been retreats and trainings and other uses on the site. So compared to what's happened on the site over time, we would expect those trips to be less. Just looking at the project in new, assuming it's a vacant site, and saying there's 24 employees and 40 residents that don't have cars there, we wouldn't expect a project-specific impact from a use like this to any of the 27 identified impacted intersections in the year 2030. And City Council has overridden cumulative traffic impacts with 2011 general plan, and if in substantial conformance, this use would have been considered as part of the general plan traffic study. So we wouldn't expect there to be any sequoia issue from traffic for the proposal.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Jordan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Vincent, I want to be clear on my frame of reference. So the frame of reference that I'm looking at this from should be what we are presuming the original CUP grant, which was a dorm of 80, a chapel of 280, and guest housing for 30 people. That's the use that was given to them by the CUP, and they may not reflect what's going on down, on the site today in terms of operations and numbers, but the frame of reference on looking to, as to whether, as to one of the components on whether it substantially conforms would be those numbers and that original use. Would that be true?
Yes. I'd like to expand on that a little bit more because, to remind the commission, the use, the physical plant and the use of that physical plant that you just described, essentially reading from the staff report of the county planning commission meeting of May 9, 1962, right now, we're operating under the assumption that that was what was presented and considered by the planning, the county planning commission when it granted the CUP. And arguably, I guess, they impliedly approved the intensity of use based on this description of that physical plant, the number of parking spaces, the size of the building, the number of people that can be accommodated in with those buildings. The best I can do right now is say that the planning commission, when they approved the CUP, as is documented by the letter that was sent a few days later to the property owner or the applicant, is that they impliedly approved of the intensity of use related to those facilities. And so what we're doing, what staff needs to do, and what we're asking the commission to comment on is to consider whether the proposed use before you is consistent with the intensity of use that was impliedly approved by the county in 1962.
And then staff didn't show it on the board, I don't think, but there's some slides in our handout that have, that reference the findings from the CUP ordinance, and in particular, that one that just goes, you know, "public, peace, health, safety, blah, blah, blah." But to make a, an SCD, a substantial conformance determination, is not a revalidation of findings, is it? Because in theory, what was granted 50 years ago and with somebody deciding at that point in time, there are presumptions, and investing a project with those rights may actually not meet today's findings if you applied them today right now. Is that a true statement?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I'd answer that question slightly differently, or I'd answer a different question. I don't think our findings for CUPS have any bearing on your determination or your comments regarding the determination today. What staff needs to be focused on is making a determination of whether or not the proposed use is substantially conforming to what was approved by the county in 1962. That is what this property has as a property right, other than the allowed uses under the A1 zone in the city's zoning today.
Exactly, and then.
It's a legal non-conforming condition.
And then somebody, one of the public speakers did make reference to the difference between profit and nonprofit, but our list of CUPS in an A1 zone has lots of examples that could be for profit, right?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, that's true, and the county's list of conditional uses, more contemporaneous to the time of this CUP, also allowed profit and nonprofit conditional uses in any zone that allows conditional uses.
And then I want to kind of carry on where Commissioner Higgins was going on adding conditions, and you're going to want to split hairs with me on my examples, but the substantial conformance determination for both la entrada and casa esperanza contained new conditions. I think la entrada is probably the worst example because it was stuff they already had to do, but it just changed timelines or orders. But for the homeless shelter, it seemed like that they were found substantially conforming, but there were new conditions put on them to make them more substantially conforming. And so in particular, what concerns me is the references I read a couple times to the use of buses going up to the site. And if I thought that a condition to be added as part of finding it substantially conforming was a prohibition on buses and a use of only vans, do you see that as problematic? was a prohibition on buses and a use of only vans, do you see that as problematic?
No.
Okay. That's the best answer you've ever given me, one word. And then, B, one other, just a clarification. You mentioned that in that area that you thought it would qualify in our list of CUPs was, I actually had it written down, but it's the community care facilities. But its preface with that was state licensed. And I probably wasn't listening too well. But would this facility be state licensed?
I believe it is, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Lodge?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Vincent, by virtue of the fact that this facility has existed up there for 54 years, even if the CUP can't be found, have they acquired some kind of legal standing just by virtue of being there all those years?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, yes, they have. And the city has treated them as having a legal non-conforming conditional use. They have the right to operate a seminary with the physical plant as described in the staff report. And it was based on the confirmation that the confirming letter saying that the county approved their application that specified that physical plant. And as I said, the approval of the intensity of use is more implicit in the approval of the physical plant in that location. In other words, presumably, when they requested a chapel with a 280-person capacity, when you approve that chapel, you impliedly approve the fact that 280 people will be up there maybe someday. I mean, obviously, the world has become much more complicated. And conditional use permits and every land use permit today is more specific in its allowances and its limitations. But the way I interpret what I'm seeing in this staff report and the fact that the county sent a letter saying, "We approve the description in the staff report," tells me that they impliedly approve the intensity of that use, you know, of the facility that's described there. So, the owners of this property have the right to continue to operate and maintain a seminary with a physical plant that is as described and the implied right to the various machinations that would allow that to happen, that allow that facility to operate. So, this is, so your action today, one, I want to remind the commission, you're not taking an action, you're making comments and suggestions to the Community Development Director. That's first. And second, regardless of what the Community Development Director determines about the, whether the proposed use is substantially conforming or not conforming to the permitted use, it will not affect the existing rights of the owners of this property as to their conditional legal non-conforming use of this property.
Okay, thank you. I have a question for the COO. If you could come back to the podium, please. Now, you're proposing a maximum of 40 clients at a time. What kinds of restrictions do you place, will you be placing on these people if this is, goes ahead?
They cannot come and go as they please?
Yes.
They can only, they're always accompanied by staff?
I'm sorry. Raise the microphone.
If they ever were to leave the facility to need to go to an appointment or something, they would be driven by staff. They would never come and go as they please on their own. All of these, I just wanted to emphasize too, are conditions put on us by our state licensure. So, including our maximum number of clients, including needing to conform with the fire marshal's requirements, all of those are under our state licensure requirements. And so, they're audited regularly by the state to make sure that we're conforming with those rules. The clients aren't allowed to have vehicles. They have limited access to phones and laptops. It's really an isolated environment.
So, if one of your clients decided to go for a hike up Rattlesnake Creek, they would have to have somebody go with them on staff?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, in the staff report, there would be a, I noted, be a fire evacuation plan. And that would be developed with the fire department, I assume?
Chair Campanella and Commissioner Lodge, yes. When they would submit, if and when they decide to do interior improvements, the level, the amount of square footage that is improved would possibly kick in the need for fire sprinkler systems to be installed.
To go deeper into that, I have a couple of mechanisms. So, for the fire evacuation, the state, which they submit a, what's called an 850 form, it's a state form, they always submit that to us for inspection by the local agency for said facilities that are regulated by the state. It also requires an evacuation plan of the facility. But because it is in a designated high fire area, I can require them to provide us and we will assist them. I mean, we got plenty of examples up there, Ellen Canto or places like that. Help them develop their plan. Even with that being said, Chapter 49 of the Fire Code also allows me to require an evacuation plan, whether, you know, St. Mary's has one with us. So, I mean, we do require large campuses like that where there's the potential to have a large population needed to be moved rapidly, you know, the West Mount College, some of the schools up there and things like that. So, we have them in place.
Okay. Now, I don't know, Commissioner Jordan is planning to go somewhere with his comment about no buses but requiring vans. Might that become an issue if everybody had to be, if they didn't have a big enough vehicle to get, or vehicles to get everybody off the campus in a, quickly?
It potentially could. But so, for, depending on the facilities and you look at the constraints, you look at the clientele, maybe even the population numbers. But buses will make it easier for us because you can take a higher number of people out of there. But it doesn't necessarily mean we can maneuver as well. Now, the one thing I will say about some of the school buses is they make our fire engines look short. So, I would rely on Mr. Gullett and we would look at those to see if they would maneuver appropriately. That being said, facilities like this usually have a 10 or 12-passenger van or two. And that would already be the start of evacuation. They can contract with, you know, one of the rental agencies, which is what we do like with Ellen Canto. Again, another place that you really couldn't get a bus. The other thing to consider is the road system up there. And is it appropriate to have, you know, large buses doing the evacuations if we have more maneuverable, smaller vans? So, it would be a, you know, case-by-case evaluation. And I don't quite have an answer for that, but we would work around it if that became a restriction.
Okay, well, thank you. Sometimes some of those bridges are even a little difficult to navigate with just a sedan. So, I understand your point. Okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
Okay. Commissioner Schwartz, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I'll start with what, for me, is the most fundamental question. And I've put this to staff and Mr. Vincent. And it's the issue of the so-called missing conditional use permit document. So, my first question to that, and I did pose this in an email to staff already. It sounds like the county has not been able to locate this. Is that, was that our first effort to obtain? So, along those lines, and I'm thinking about some advice or direction I heard from Mr. Vincent, I'm looking at the 1962, this is Exhibit C in our packet, the County Planning Commission staff report. It specifically references a county ordinance 661, which seems to be connected to or related to the issuance of conditional use permits. I would think, but I'd like to hear either from staff or Mr. Vincent, from your research with the county, was this not a common practice to create CUPs in whatever form they took in association with ordinance number 661, such that the county does have, going back to this era, this decade, CUPs just at all? Yeah, B, I mean, Ms. Calarte, thank you.
Commissioner Schwartz, we do have ordinance 661, and it clearly allowed for conditional use permits.
Okay, so such a document, such a format and a vehicle existed at the time, the county just cannot literally locate the document for this particular property at that, is that right?
I can't speak to the format, I don't know.
No, no, I understand.
But we can't, whatever they use to say this is the CUP, we cannot locate.
Okay. So, then I go to, on my hunt to try to find out where this missing CUP could be. Then my next question to staff, and I don't know if I need to direct this actually to Mr. Keikendal, when I look at Exhibit A in our packet, which is the letter from Reverend Van Dorp to Axis Treatment Centers, in the last paragraph, there's a reference to St. Mary's, I'll just shorthand use St. Mary's, staying within the numbers called for in the 1962 conditional use permit. Now, when I read that, I thought to myself, and maybe someone can help me with this. So, then St. Mary's must have a copy in their archives of the CUP. Because otherwise, how could the reverend assert that St. Mary's is in compliance if he doesn't have a document to use as a basis for asserting that? So, did staff, Mr. Keikendal, were you contacted to see if you could connect with the reverend and try to find this out?
Commissioner Schwartz, we did reach out to St. Mary's through Steve Brown. And we provided the information that we were able to locate from the county files, which is the same that the C staff has. And it was not the actual CUP, but it was the minutes, the staff report, everything that we have that we shared with them. So, I don't, and I think in conversations Steve had with the reverend, they do not have a copy of that. But we did share what we had as the background.
And Commissioner Schwartz, I'd just like to add that I did ask Mr. Keikendal to contact Mr. Van Dorp to see if he did have a copy. And this letter from St. Mary's was provided based on a request that staff made to them to give us a history of what's been going on at the site. So, I think, you know, I don't think he had a lot of familiarity with wording for conditional use permits. But for him, I think he saw the numbers that we have on file for these buildings on site.
He meaning the Reverend Van Dorp?
Yes. So, he knows that he has an 80-person dorm room. And he knows he has a full kitchen. And he knows he has a 280-person church. So, I think that's where he was going with staying within the limits of the CUP.
Yeah. And I think it was maybe a misquote as far as referencing the CUP. But he was trying to, you know, reassure us that his activity has been consistent since the beginning.
So, that, thank you, Mr. Keikendal. So, then my follow-on question back to you, Mr. Vincent. Even though you advised us, as you already have, we're looking at, you're asking us to comment today on a substantially conforming set of uses, proposed uses. But we need a means of measurement. We need some kind of a yardstick to say that something substantially conforms. And if we, and if we only have a letter with some assertions or a descriptive accounting by a representative of St. Mary's as to what is currently or has been taking place on the property, how do we even know that that conforms, has conformed partially, wholly, with what they are legally allowed to do? And if we don't even know that, so that's a question and a gap in my mind, then how can we, the city even and Planning Commission, comment on whether or not the newly proposed use or uses by Axis Treatment Centers would conform? You know, it's like, if we don't connect A and B, how can we relate B and C in this equation? And so, these are puzzle pieces that are missing for me that I think are kind of just essential pieces of a logic puzzle that have to be worked out here.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, this is not uncommon when we deal with historical record. You've seen it before in other applications where we go back into the archives and that site plan that you would love to have doesn't exist. We generally try to piece it together and figure it out. And as I've been saying so far today, the best I can do with what the staff report provides us as far as information and the physical layout of the facility, it's been built as proposed. I mean, nobody's saying that there's a 300-seat church or that the, you know, the physical plant differs from how it's described in the staff report. And the best I could do is to say, impliedly, there is a certain intensity of use of that kind of facility, a seminary with buildings described as they are, a parking lot that has 60 spaces presumably intended to be used someday, that there's a certain intensity of use. So, you take that and you rely on staff to say what that intensity of use might be, maybe, you know, with a modern twist. But you say, what's that intensity of use today? And then you compare that construct to the potential intensity of use that the applicant or that is proposed by Axis Treatment Centers. And you comment to the Community Development Director whether, one, you're able to make that comparison with the absence of the possibility that there's a document out there that has the words "conditional use permit" on top of it and may or may not have more conditions than you see in the letter that was sent back to the property owner in 1962. I don't know. I don't know if there are more conditions or not. I don't know if they just say, "You've described it and we're okay with that."
So, let me, if I could, Mr. Vincent, as a follow-on, we have, in my mind, what's a missing critical document, if in fact, we're continuing to look at this through the substantial conformance determination lens, let me pause for a moment. Would it be more practical, more pragmatic to have this come forward as just a redevelopment project? I mean, because otherwise, it seems like we're really wrestling with a very problematic process. And I, to me, find one that has a great deal of deficiencies because of the missing CUP. Whereas if we say, we sort of all agree, the document's not available, we can't make, let's just, I'm just saying hypothetically, an SCD finding at any level. What if we treat this as, you know, new property owner, the uses may be slightly different, less intensive, more intensive, but we deal with this regularly in the city? And would that be an easier road to go down than trying to make an SCD? And I don't know if that's been entertained by Mr. Keikendal and the clients and so forth.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the way I'd answer that question is that's not what the applicant has asked us to do.
Okay. I'll put it out there to the applicant once we keep going down this road. Okay. So, let me see how I can ask you the next one. So, going back to, again, the 1962 County Planning Commission staff report, just very simply put, it was to approve the construction and operation of a seminary. Now, this goes to intensification of use or range of uses. But then, we go back to the Reverend Van Dorp's letter. And actually, the list of uses that have occurred on the property are a pretty expanded version of what happens at many seminaries, including, this was interesting to me, a 12-step recovery program. Gosh, I wonder if that sounds like the services that Axis Treatment Centers offers. So, but, you know, we're taking, we're taking for granted a letter that Van Dorp wrote as this being complete and appropriate. And if I go by this, see, I could say, oh, well, that's a very similar use. It's actually not intensification of use. But I don't even know if this is accurate, if it was even allowed. It's very hard to triangulate, I can tell you. Okay. Let me go back to some of the... Okay, let me go back to some of the public comment. In terms of this, what I'll call a nexus between fire hazard and possible intensification of use, not in the numbers of people who will be on the property, but perhaps the demographic, which could, we could interpret as a different intensification of use because of the nature of what the clients, Axis clients, will be doing there and needing there from how you've described. And I went to your website, looked at your facilities, your programs, and fairly familiar with that. And this is not, by the way, my questions and my comments have no bearing on any philosophical orientation because I think what you're doing is important in our larger community. However, could you comment, maybe Mr. Deacon, you could come up and speak to the following for me. Am I correct in understanding from my research that the clients who you'll have on the property, however many number they are and for how many days they're there, with the types of addictions that they have and the types of intensive treatment and the experiences that come out of that intensive treatment, has it also been your experience that there's an increase in fire hazard through a high case of cigarette smoking as a result? Because that goes to fire danger and we already, we've heard from Mr. Austin from our fire department, that the buildings are not up to code, we don't have windows that are up to code, so, and it's a high-fire hazard area, especially as mapped in the city's high-fire zones.
We will have a designated smoking area that'll be approved by the fire marshal and therefore I would say no. It's not an increased risk.
Okay. Let me go back to some of the questions I've, thank you, Mr. Deacon, I think that's it for now. Mr. Vincent, or I think this is for Mr. Vincent and this has been asked of you today already, should, within the commission's scope of comments, comments slash recommendations back to the community development director, if in fact the majority of commissioners were to believe that there is substantial conformance, is today the day that would be appropriate to identify additional or, I don't want to say extraordinary, additional conditions of approval, some of which come from assertions in the documents we've received from the applicant? Could be concerns that are raised today, fire hazards from members of the public? Could we make that list today if in fact the commission wanted to go in that direction with their feedback? Or is that for another day?
Today is the day.
Today's the day.
So that would be it.
That's the, okay.
Commissioner Schwartz, can I go back to?
Yes, please, Mr. Austin.
Yes, okay, the smoking aspect of it, since it's going to be state-regulated, they won't be allowed to smoke within 20 feet of the buildings. That being said, the fire code, even in high-fire designated areas, does not prohibit smoking of cigarettes.
Right, I understand that, right.
Okay, so, and it can be, and I mean, I don't know, I'll use the wharf as an example, you can create, you can be somewhere where it's sensitive to fire and create a safe area for people to smoke, which I believe there's room up there to do that for this facility, but they would also have to enforce and manage it. Also, why I'm sitting here, and I don't know if this will help you or not in your decision, but the building code, when you look under it for uses, now this is for the buildings, I'm not talking about zoning, but when you look up residential facilities, seminaries, monasteries, and residential care facilities are all under the subcategory of residential structures. You know, they're not administering drugs or anything like that, so it doesn't put them in a hospital category. So historically, that, it has complied with the building code definition of residential use, if that helps.
Is there any, maybe to staff, and I think it's my last question, Ms. Broaddus or Ms. Calarte, is there any, does new consideration of the allowances in the A1 for the newly proposed use, does that warrant reconsideration of the zoning of this 35-acre property at all? Has staff looked at that since, you know, it's not about taking high school, again, I go back to the reverend's letter, it's not about high school students, young adults, summer programs, you know, some of the things that St. Mary's has used. It's really like a 12-step recovery program for all consideration.
Mr. Chair, I'll jump in on that one, I think. The, we're not talking about a rezone here. In fact, I think that the conditional use in a conditional use permit, even if a substantial conformance determination was not made and some other use wanted to come in to use this facility, I think it would be, the most appropriate way to do that would be as a conditional use permit. The reason to say that is twofold. One, the adjacent zoning is A1 zoning. To make this, top of this one hill, some kind of other zone, you know, island, would not be consistent with proper zoning practice.
Commercial's allowed in the A1 because this is.
In general, commercial is not allowed in the A1. Only commercially, the only commercial uses allowed in the A1 zone are with conditional use permits. That's why it's appropriate to have a conditional use permit here. Plus, the general plan designates this area as low-intensity residential. We wouldn't, we couldn't make the findings necessary to rezone the property to something else. So A1 zoning is the correct zoning. A use that is inconsistent with the uses allowed within the A1, well, the use of this property should either fall within the A1 zoning of the city of Santa Barbara, the use is allowed conditionally under the A1 zone, or should continue under the legal non-conforming condition allow, that it was created and permitted by the county in 1962. Those are the three ways something gets done up here.
Okay. Lastly, then, especially if the original CUP cannot be located with any additional effort, would we be creating, I'm sorry, were you going to say, no?
I have a thought, though, because we did find the conditional use permit for the gymnasium.
I saw, yes, and you gave that to us today.
And that is more recent than the CUP for the actual seminary facility and that has hardly any information on it, so.
I see that, right.
One thought is that that's what CUPs looked like in 1962, so just, you know, food for thought.
Yes, so this last question I was going to ask to staff is, would we be creating, or the community development department, creating a new CUP that could be the umbrella for everything that the commission might recommend to the community development director to include in making a substantial conformance determination, especially Level 4, along with some assumptions and commitments about how the property would be used that would justify an SCD?
Chair Campanella and Commissioner Schwartz, we wouldn't be creating a new CUP. If this was not found in substantial conformance, there would probably be another person, another entity that would want to come and try to do something with those existing buildings. So the existing CUP does not go away, it stays. And this, we felt that this new idea could possibly fall within the umbrella of what is allowed up there now.
Except that we don't have a clear and complete document that actually describes it, that, we keep coming back to this missing important puzzle piece and that's why I'm trying to see how we go forward, but I think you've answered it to the best of your ability and I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Pujol.
Thank you. My first question is for Mr. Deacon. So getting back to really the basic proposal you have in front of us for what you want to do, my, one of my outstanding questions, and I've read the document several times, is I don't feel like there is a good written description of what it is you're really doing on the site. There's a letter attached to the staff report, there's background information by staff, but frankly, what I was looking for was something that seemed to be what you were indicating or at least what the staff is indicating, is that you're no longer going to do the seminary, you're no longer going to use the church facility, you're no longer going to have one-year-long residents sleeping and staying and living in the actual dwelling unit portions, because I think there's a few of those on the parcel that have kitchens or something, because that's what we have now, we have that, we have all that. And what I believe, what it seems like the discussion has been, is that you're going to discontinue that and instead, only on that site, you are going to have this treatment facility with a maximum of 40 patients and then employees. But what I don't see, I don't really see that written or explained anywhere, so I would like to hear from you, is this a complete replacement activity for the prior uses? And if so, elaborate just a little bit on what that means in your mind.
Yes, the short answer to your question is this is a complete replacement of what's happening there now. However, the activities we are replacing the old activity with are going to be very similar. A good amount of daily time will be dedicated to reflection, group therapy, individual therapy, 12-step meetings, yoga, meditation, exercise, art therapy. I mean, it's basically, our days are very regimented and routine, that's part of our service, is to simplify people's lives to a point where they're here from 9:00 to 10:00 and then they go over here and they're with another counselor from 10:00 to 11:00 and then they go to a 12-step meeting from 11:00 to 12:00, they have lunch from 12:00 to 1:01, very similar to the way retreats are scheduled.
So, and I understand that, and the fact that it's a replacement and the other uses go out the door is an important thing to get on the record. To me, what I would be wanting to see is that written down and explained in detail and I think.
Absolutely.
Mr. Kikekendall probably understands what I'm trying to get at. Even the original 1962 CUP by the county had a good, lengthy, multi-page description of everything that was going to occur on the site. Now, they may have morphed it over time, I don't know if that actually fits with that CUP they originally had or not, but without even getting into that discussion, they define the boundaries, the parameters, the caps of the activities that would be there. And in your case, very importantly so, because it would need to say, well, wait a second, are you reserving the right to go back to the prior uses at some point or are those uses gone forever? And to me, that's important in terms of intensity. So I mean, it makes a big difference whether you're adding a potential level of intensity or if you're taking what used to be there and switching it out and making an argument that it's less intensive.
As I said, the activities themselves are going to mimic the old activities, but it'll be much simplified in the sense that.
Right, but I hope, I think you probably, and Mr. Kikekendall, do you want to speak to that because I think, you know, being the planner.
If I understand your question, Commissioner Pujol, the project description we put forth is exactly what they're proposing to do at this point in time, if there was.
What are you calling the project description? Can you answer that?
It's the residential treatment center with a maximum of 40 patients or clients with, I think it's 24 employees that are kind of staggered over the time.
But which document are you referring to that you're calling the project description?
It should be the applicant letter with the access letterhead.
Okay, so, okay, so that's the sum total of, from whatever point you move forward, if you move forward onward, that's the sum total of the activities on the site.
Yes, if there was ever a change, we would have to have a change to the project description and come back for another SCD if there was ever any desired change from what we have before you today.
Well, certainly you would see that one of my comments going forward is that that be very well-defined and clear, because frankly, it just isn't right now. So, and that's helpful, very helpful, actually, in terms of moving forward. Now I have, but that was, I have some other questions and Mr. Vincent, you mentioned several times looking at a change in the intensity of the uses, one of the parameters. I also want to query the actual type of use as well. And if you or staff could respond to this, I would like it if you could help me out a bit on this. The old predecessor ordinance at the county, ordinance 661, had a conditional use permit feature in it. They had lists of the types of things that could be approved and as you all have brought up several times, that was a long time ago, things were done in a lot different way than they're done now, but still it had some sense of that. Our current city zoning ordinance also has those features. So if you go to the conditional use permit section of Chapter 28, it has the whole laundry list of which zones can have conditional use permits and which types of activities can be approved by conditional use permit. So I was looking at those and I, the intensity of use I understand because we're trying to decide whether or not, under a substantial conformity determination, the use fits within the scope of the intensity of the originally approved permit, but I think we're also looking at the type of conditional use permit that was allowed. So I know a laundry list isn't all the be-all, end-all, there's lots of interpretation and evaluation, you have to decide if you want to say something like this treatment center fits in line with the type of use that the seminary was, but I just want to point out and ask a couple of questions in that a seminary or a church, say a church, is called out as a separate use, line item use in the conditional use permit section of Chapter 28. A separate line item use is a convent monastery. Probably easy enough to say both of those things were kind of part of that definition of seminary. So I go down the list, an educational institution is listed but doesn't fit because it has to be institution by a state board of equalization and you're not that. Then later on the list, there's hospitals and I think we heard today, it's not really a medical facility, I would agree with that. And further down the list, skipping over lots of them, I suppose, is a state-licensed residential care facility for elderly, community care facility, et cetera, which I believe is the one that staff referenced earlier, perhaps on that other project or something like that. So what I'm looking for here is if this is most like a community care facility, which is Item R, is that the same type of use or a different use from the church, monastery, or the seminary use that was previously approved? And the reason I bring it up is, for example, you can have, you can have other enterprises and a medical facility, and I don't think any of us would say a hospital's the same as a seminary use, but is this thing the same as a seminary use? I mean, does it fit within that scheme of things? So when we do a substantial conformity determination, aren't we also just saying that it is, if we decide to move forward and say it fits as a substantial conformity determination, aren't we saying that it's within the scope of the intensity and it's within the scope of the type of use that was approved? Because to me, they're not always the same thing.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I would say that's exactly the question that staff is asking of you. Can you find, because I agree that the proposed use, most of the list of uses that we have listed in our conditional use permit chapter, the use most similar to the proposed use is a state-licensed residential care facility. So then the question comes back to you, which is, as their operation is described in their applicant letter to you, and Mr. Deacon also described the nature of the day and that's listed in a tabular form in their letter, and he explained his, her perspective about how the meditation, yoga, reflection, so forth. yoga, reflection, so forth, compares similarly to a monastery or a seminary. That's the question to you. Does it compare similarly? Is it substantially conforming? Did his description of their day, in your minds, substantially conform to your perspective of what the day would look like at a seminary? That's a question for you, because that's kind of what staff has, the way staff has approached this consideration of substantial conformity, they looked at, well, we have a conditional use in this A1 zone property. It was approved by the county. It wasn't approved by us, but it was approved as a conditional use. It's a legal conditional use. I went back and looked, the county's conditional use permit ordinance in 1967, I assume is probably about the same as 62, includes such uses as churches, clubs, monasteries, et cetera. So, I mean, we've got, that, there's a box there. The seminary was determined by the county to fit into one of those boxes. It was approved. It has, to whatever degree we have a record of what was approved, that's what we've given you. We'll try to get more for the community development director. We'll try to have county staff confirm whether or not the documentation we have matches up with other CUPs issued at the same time, to try to solidify the question of, is there something missing here or not? So, again, it comes back, the question comes back to you from the community development department. They've kind of looked at this so far, and they've said, well, we've got, you can have a church. You can have a convent, a monastery. As you said, an educational institution, and you can have a state-licensed residential care facility. They didn't try to compare it to a golf course. It's another use, you know, that's another conditional use, but obviously, it has an entirely different set of parameters. So, one question for the commissioners to comment on is whether or not you feel that a residential care facility, as the applicant has described their operation, is substantially conforming to the operation, the approved operation on the property, which is a seminary. And then, the next question is, okay, if you can get your head wrapped around those positively, and say that those two days, the uses, look similar enough to get to a substantial conformance determination, then what about the intensity that's being proposed? Is the intensity of that use substantially either equal or less than what's approved out there? Or does it present some other kind of intensity that wasn't addressed in that CUP? That's, there's the second, the shoe to drop, so to speak.
Okay, here's, okay.
I just wanted to add some food for thought, but also, in their letter of May of 1962, the county actually added a paragraph stating that if there were changes made with, which aren't substantial conformance, that returning to the planning commission would be unnecessary. So they already presumed possibly that there could be some changes.
Yeah, it's their system, yeah. So, my next, my next question, well, let me just say, I was looking in the materials and looking for indications, documented specific information on the types of activities that have taken place in recent history. And I think I might have brought up a question about that up on the site visit as well, because I understand there's a letter from the pastor, indicating, the reverend, reverend, okay, indicating the types of things that have been happening over time, and that they feel that they have stayed in conformance of that. But that's not the same as actually having some sort of documentation of when and where those things took place. And the reason that I'm interested in that is because I believe there is also another feature of a conditional use permit, which means that if it, if you stop using it for a specified period of time, you lose the right to that conditional use permit. It expires for non-activity. I believe that's the case. And maybe Mr. Vincent wants to speak to that. Like, so, for example, if the last time there was an activity was five or 10 years ago, then that's basically kind of back to a vacant property with some vacant buildings on it again, without necessarily maintaining the rights to those old uses that were originally approved. So, maybe Mr. Vincent could speak to whether, is there such, does the city view a conditional use permit in that way, that you need to keep using it, or you lose that right because it's out of use? And then, secondly, can the applicant provide actual documentation to show that when those events occurred, to establish kind of a baseline year of the last activity on the site?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the city does have an ordinance that says that a conditional use or a non-conforming use can be deemed abandoned for a lack of use for a period of time. I don't have any information regarding, I mean, the, I don't know, you were up there on your site visit. I didn't even attend the site visit, but I assume that there's use occurring there right now. I'm not aware of an abandonment having occurred.
Okay, and can the applicant provide actual documentation of some of the uses that have been taking place?
Commissioner Peugeot, my understanding is the retreat uses are currently ongoing. Even when we had our site visit on Tuesday, there was a small retreat there. They have historically operated. I think they're still doing the large retreats, you know, once a month. We can provide you, I believe, from the reverend, maybe the recent schedules that they've had.
That's, that's what I'm looking for.
That's, you know, provide some comfort, but it definitely has been ongoing. It has not ceased for any period of time.
Okay, so you could commit to actually providing staff with that information?
I mean-
Chair Caponella and Commissioner Peugeot, we did find a note in the public works file from 2008 that said the kitchen was being used six days a week and serving several thousand meals in the last three months. So, that was a public works inspection that had been done for the kitchen.
Okay, that's a piece, and maybe you can add to that.
Yeah, we should be able to provide you something. I don't know how their records are, but it's definitely been an ongoing activity. It has not ceased, definitely not for 12 months.
All right, okay, very, very good. So, I think those are the scope of my, of my questions. I did have that question for the applicant earlier on the site visit about the status of the church, and maybe if you could just speak on the record. My understanding is that church, from what I heard the applicant say, that church is going to be deconsecrated, so it will no longer function as a formal church, which to me then means you're not going to have, which actually, I saw 200 in the county document as the capacity of the church, but you're not going to have, you know, like, kind of services have that potential to start up again in the future, if that was the case?
Yes, the church will be decommissioned.
Okay, okay. And then, one last question for, for Mr. Austin. You mentioned earlier on the fire evacuation plans, that St. Mary's has one with you. Are those things periodically required to be revisited, updated? You take a site visit to check it out once a year, once every couple of years, or something?
There's not regular intervals, but it's readdressed every so often. It usually, well, quite frankly, after the T-fire and Ace's Cedar fires, which, I mean, it functioned quite well. It was revisited then because it was on everybody's mind, but we don't have a calendar of, you know, let's get to it every two years or anything like that.
So, from your viewpoint, that fire plan, evacuation plan for St. Mary's is up to date?
As far as I know, yes.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Okay. Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had just one additional question, and that goes to whether or not there'll be any need for medical services, and this is what I want to ask you. So, in our staff report, it states clearly, it's not going to operate as a hospital, would not entail medical procedures or equipment. But when I, Mr. Deacon, when I look at the access treatment letter, and when I think of substance abuse, and this is my question to you, maybe you could just come to the podium, if you would, since we need your comment on record. With substance abuse, unless they've already gone through withdrawal, we're also talking about withdrawal of whatever the substance or substances are while on the property, as they go through what you describe generically as physical healing. So, is that not going to require something more than yoga instructors and counselors, therapists?
We're licensed as a subacute facility, so if they're going through acute withdrawal symptoms-
Subacute, you said, uh-huh.
Yes, they'll have to be a cottage hospital to get cleared from intense detox symptoms, and then they would be released to us, so it would be, you know, lesser kind of physical discomfort than, or danger than if they were in acute detox. Does that make sense?
Yes, and, but could you also clarify then, once they come to the property for the 20 to 30 days, are they still going, do your clients typically find themselves still in need of medical attention, going through additional-
We have, we have LVNs.
...restoration, shall we say, or physical healing?
Licensed vocational nurses on staff for things that might come up, but the risk of seizures or things that are familiar with acute detox-
Yes.
...are resolved by that point.
Are resolved before they come into the program with you-
Yeah, they're assessed thoroughly to make sure that they're appropriate for a subacute facility. They're assessed by a licensed vocational nurse, by an independent physician, and if they're in need of acute detox, then they get referred out to cottage hospital or some other medical facility.
Okay, thank you very much.
Let's see, to confirm with Mr. Vincent and staff, the staff report that we have from 1962, that describes the buildings that are to be constructed, essentially, that's what's on the site at this time. Okay, so, that approval was effectuated through the building permit process, I would guess, and somebody saw if it was conforming, they inspected it, and it was built. And I think the secondary conditional use permit was on the gymnasium, the one we received. The original documentation that we have included a gymnasium back in 1962, so I guess somewhere along the line, somebody said we'd rather do tennis courts, got an okay for that, and said, well, we really want a gymnasium, and they went back. So, we have a line of consistency from the evidence that we have to what actually was put in place, the physical plant. Correct?
Mr. Chair, I, the, and I'll let staff, you know, comment if I misspeak, but the physical plant appears to follow the description in the staff report. And as far as the gymnasium that was approved by the city, I did see in the city archives, building permits and approvals in, for its construction. And so, I have no reason to think that it's inconsistent with the permitting. I haven't seen any, anything as far as building permits from the county records. I don't know if those got transferred to us or not.
Okay. So, as far, as far as the facility and use, and looking at our substantial conformity, one of the items that we try to make a finding, and when it comes to this level, is if in fact, is the change in a project because now somebody wants to build something else or modify things. We're, that's, we're in a less complicated situation than that. We're looking at use specifically. We're not looking at the use of the facility. We're not looking at the facility itself. So, we're narrowed down to use, just to explain to the public, normally what we might be looking at at this level might be a change in the physical construction or development of the property, which we are not. As far as state licensing, and the, we have an evacuation plan relative to high fire zone. The state licensing, in addition to the requirement to comply with, I'll ask John or, yeah, anyone. A comment was made, number one, yes, there'll be an evacuation plan. Number two, that licensing requires compliance with fire requirements of the municipality. Okay. Is there somewhat of a disconnect there? If, would they be requiring, or could the licensing be requiring fireproof windows in high fire zone? Ventilation redo, so ash don't get in or sparks. Are there items that you may be required to have under your licensing agreement that might require some modification of the physical plant itself, with or without going in for a building permit to do things voluntarily, do you think?
Well, the licensing, it refers to the life safety code and to the fire marshal. So, it requires us to get the approval from the fire marshal. So, whatever the life safety code says is required of the building to keep it, like, appropriately zoned, that's what the, and, yeah. It's not the state doesn't have a specific fire regulation outside of what the fire marshal.
Okay.
Chair Caponella, I think I can address that a little more in detail. If they didn't change anything at the site, no construction proposed or anything, when we went in there to look at it, the things we would be concerned with are exiting. The building functions are working as designed and installed at the time. It would not require the upgrading of windows to, you know, dual pane or things like that at this point. That would take a construction permit. The life safety code that she's referring to is, it's NFPA's life safety code, which is 101, is more for functionality of the operations. So, have you got in place the ability to evacuate, or do you have an area of safe refuge identified? It's more the, that type of concept. It does not relate to actual construction materials and whether they meet today's current code. That being said, I'm sure, although we haven't done any research, I don't know if we could, the buildings appear to be built to the building and fire code of the time.
Okay. And one more question, if I can, while you're up there. In addition to evacuation, are there current requirements for people as far as plantings and fire ladders, et cetera, around buildings that have to be complied with on an ongoing basis? Not, so you're not grandfathered because the tree was planted sometime in the past, but you're, you would have to provide for that clearance based on current fire safety codes?
Absolutely. The existing facility already has to comply, and we do inspect it periodically for that defensible space requirement, which is the 100-foot, you know, and we got the different zones and the 100-foot. St. Mary's has actually been a great partner over the years, both maintaining their defensible space, and then actually doing, allowing us to do a vegetation management project a little farther away, about the time that the T-fire rolled through there. And what that does is you go in and you thin and you remove, you know, dry and dead vegetations and things like that. And what it does is when a fire, and we actually have it documented when we present our benefit assessment renewal, is as the fire got closer to the building, you can see it loses its intensity. So, those things are in place currently, and I gather that whoever ends up in there, we would go into a partnership to continue vegetation projects, and then they'll always have to meet defensible space. That's state law.
Great, thank you very much. For Mr. Vincent, assuming the substantial conformity determination was made for this project, and then they decided sometime in the future to move or didn't make sense, we're doing a determination to a seminary, correct? So, if for some reason the Catholic Church had a lot of priests, people that wanted to be priests, I don't know when that's going to happen, but a lot, let's say that became a need, or somebody wanted to come in and go back to the original use of the property, or come back for substantial conformity, that could still be done under the original permit. We're not losing, that permit's not going away because of this substantial conformity, correct?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the applicant before you is proposing a use, and is asking you to compare that use and determine whether or not it's substantially conforming with, if that- With, if that is determined to be substantially conforming, that would be the, the new allowed use. That's how they've described it. They, they are asking for that to be the, the new allowed use of the property. And, and so that, any future use after that would be compared against what is being proposed by the applicant.
So when we get to the intensity level, then, this intensity that we'll be determining is now a new benchmark versus what, what was there before, which means if somebody else came in for a substantial conformity in the future, we would look at whether they're asking for something, or the planning commission at the time would see whether it's more intensive or not. But now we have a new, a new threshold of what intensity is to judge by if approval were given.
I guess, I, I'd go back for a second. That, that the, the answer I just gave you really isn't germane to your, your determination today. I, I'd say at this point, I don't think you need to, and I don't want to, make a determination on the, the future, some future proposed use that hasn't come forward yet. What you have before you today is a request from an applicant asking to be compared against the seminary use, both in the description of its use and its intensity. And you're being asked to determine and provide comment to the community and development director as to whether or not the proposal is substantially conforming to the seminary use and its intensity. I, I don't want to guess as to what a future use later down the road might, how we might handle that. So I, you, you gave me a factual scenario, a possibility that the Catholic Church may somehow want to rebuy this property and recreate the seminary. Right now, that's not before us. If that, if that were the application before us, this would be a number, you know, it wouldn't be coming to you. If the Catholic Church didn't want to sell the property and wanted to continue a seminary use, they have that right today, subject to the conditions of the CUP. So that's, that, that is what it is today. You have a proposal before you. I don't want to speculate on how we will treat unspecified ideas of other uses.
Well, sorry for going on that tangent. Let me just ask it one other way. The CUP that's currently in place does not change. The fact that they were, are in substantial conformity allows them to operate under that CUP. Is that correct, if we approve it?
That, that is the way it would work. That's the way a substantial conformance determination would work, is that the CUP would, the CUP would exist as it does, the permitted use would be a seminary as described, with the facility as described, the implied intensity of use, as I mentioned, and there would be a substantial conformance determination in the city files saying that, and, that the facility being proposed by the access treatments is substantially conforming to that permitted use.
Good. Okay, thank you for allowing me to correct my question, and thank you for the response. Okay, any other questions? We have lights on. Okay, before we go to comments, I guess, a question for staff. We are going to comments. Would you be looking at individual comments from us and suggestions, or individual comments, and then a motion with a recommendation of a majority of comments? What's your, would you like today?
Chair Caponel and commissioners, it would be comments that we would accept for the input on the request, and then no motion would be required. Then we would take the comments and, and make an evaluation and then issue an STD.
Okay, great, thank you for clarifying. Okay, so whose lights on first? Mr. Higgins, comments please, to be taken by staff in their consideration of the substantial conformity determination.
Thank you, Chair. So, sorry to cheat here, but I do have one more question, and either for staff or the applicant and perhaps the broker. The property could still be used as a church, correct? So church with a dormitory, and that wouldn't come to us. That's, that's what I heard. And so, has the property been advertised? And I know that, I see the for sale sign up there, and you can tell me that's none of our business, but I just am curious as to the, the reach of the, the advertising, it's, it's any and all potential uses, and a nod is fine, or if you want to elaborate on that, that'd be fine.
I'm Steve Brown, the broker for St. Mary's on the sale of the property, and your question is, was it exposed?
To other churches or the prospective buyers are laundry list or a very narrow list, or?
No, we tried to narrow it down in light of the fact that it's a conditional use permit, so we didn't want to go too far out of field. But we had any number of inquiries, and it was pretty well circulated, so that we had schools, we had church groups, we had a lot of dreamers that wanted to run their organizations out of there, but yeah, it was exposed to a whole litany of-
Okay.
Different users.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the-
Okay, do you want to start with comments?
Yeah, I'll go with comments. I think, you know, I, my feeling is though, I appreciate the, the concerns by the neighborhood on, on this process, and with respect to slowing everything down to take a harder look at traffic or fire-related issues up there. However, I don't, I don't feel as though we're, we have a lack of evidence before us. The, what was explained to us by Mr. Vincent and staff, I totally agree with regard to the, the lack of detail that is common in historic CUPs or lack thereof. I think we have a de facto CUP with the add-on by the city at the, with the gym. I'm not concerned with how we're going to compare this use to conditions of approval or performance standards that probably were never, would never have been attached to that form for a CUP in the late 60s. My, my feeling is though, this is, with regard to the straight question to us as posed by Mr. Vincent, is this an intensification of the use? And I don't think it is compared to a dormitory that can house 80 people, additional residences on the property that can house another six to eight staff, a 290-person chapel, a gymnasium and whatnot. I, I just can't see it. Based on what we have before us, which is all that we have in the form of the applicant's assurances, my concern though is that we're going to rely on the applicant's assurances, and that's why I was asking about conditions of approval, and the answer is we don't do that on SCDs. So I'm, I'm also, I sort of have a question about the appropriateness of the SCD here, because within our, our planning commission guidelines, it seems to corral us around SCDs for projects that are in between that place of discretionary approval or an environmental document approval and construction documents where something has changed. And so I don't know that this is, this warrants an SCD. It doesn't trigger a change of use permit because, assuming we're, we're going with the assumptions in the applicant representations, the parking's not going to change. Performance agreements are not necessarily appropriate either. The community group housing, I forget the exact word, but, but that's a conditional use in the A1 Zone District. So I'm, I'm comfortable here, and I, I'm a little concerned it's even getting some air in a public hearing, because I think we have enough evidence to rely on in our code that allows a use like this on that particular property in that Zone District. We have a humongous need for these types of facilities with the opiate epidemic that's out there beyond compare right now. So I, I can, I can support the, the project as presented and make, make positive comments about the applicability of the, the use under the current use permit and allowances within the Zone District. One more point, though, I, I think that we can all, and including the neighbors, we can, we can try to hang our hat on, or at least get some comfort with regard to this particular use being state licensed. So they have parameters that they still have to comport to with regard to their licenses. So that gives, or ought to give you some assurance that we're, we're able to look over their shoulder, or you can, with regard to the state licensing. And with that, Mr. Chair, those are my comments.
Commissioner Jordan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd agree with Commissioner Higgins. And one thing in particular, I think we've, we've bent over backwards to hold a public forum for what I think is probably adequate material that was in hand to have this at a lower level of approval. I think Mr. Vincent said it, I pretty much wrote down exactly what he said, but as their operations are described, the residential care facility is certainly substantially conforming to the existing use and, and intensity. And in fact, I think the, it's clear to me that the intensity will be much less going forward if this is approved than what has been historically taking place over the past few decades. The, the, I think what's missing here and why you saw me go to great pains to, to ask the question I knew the answer to about the frame of reference, is that while the existing St. Mary's has been functioning, it certainly hasn't been functioning at the level of approved intensity back in 1965. It's not putting 280 people in a church at one time, it's not filling up the parking lot, it doesn't have 80 people living in the dorms, and it doesn't have 30 people living in the guest houses. While it's still doing some of those things, or many of those things, we're trying, we're, we're referencing what they're entitled to versus what they're going to propose, not what's actually on the ground now. And this is a common, common issue when you have a vacant commercial building in town for a year or two, and then you have a BEVMO coming in and the neighborhood goes crazy on traffic, even though the traffic is at a historical lower level than it was 10 years ago. And so I get the, I get the concern, but I think the frame of reference was laid out accurately that, that makes the case that the intensity going forward, as described by the applicant, will be much less than they're entitled to. The only suggestion I would continue to have, I'm going to continue to disagree, I think we do have a history of successfully weaseling conditions on to SCDs, and I would like to see some type of restriction on, you know, tour bus-type vehicles going up and down there to take people or groups of people for their purpose, and that be restricted to, you know, your large extended vans, 12 or 14-passenger vans. Up until about a year ago, I was up there twice a week. I'm one of the people that have been displaced from your basketball court, so Tuesdays and Sundays, and that was probably 10 or 15 years of my life. So I've driven that, driven that road a good amount. I don't live up there, but I've driven that road a good amount, and that is a challenging road, as Commissioner Lodge said, not just along the bridge, but even as you make that first turn after pulling onto Los Canoas, around that turn and some other turns there, it is a challenging road just for two vehicles, let alone a, a bus. And I would hope that we could find a way to call it something other than a condition that would be agreeable to the applicant, that they would not be running that size vehicle up and down. So again, I, I agree with Jay. I can certainly make the nexus in use and the determination in, in actually less intensity and recommend that it be approved. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Lodge?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to make this quick, because I agree with my colleagues who've already spoken, and would just like to add that the CUP goes with the property, and it, whether or not you can find the original document. I think with the state licensing requirements, with the fire evacuation plan, and what appears to be a lower intensity use, that this would be an appropriate use there, and I certainly could make findings for conformity. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Schwartz?
I want to start by expressing my view of why we are here, and it's not just the pro forma associated with a Level IV substantial conformance determination. This isn't just make-work for staff and the commissioners and the city attorney's office, but it's also to provide the public an opportunity to know what's going on in and by its local government, so there's transparency, and there's an opportunity for the public to express themselves, especially in this case, with the constraints and the high-fire zone of this neighborhood, for the neighbors to come out. So while I understand that some of my colleagues think that this could have warranted, or should have warranted, what's considered a lower level of review administrative that doesn't come to a public hearing, and while academically I understand that, there's a larger purpose for public hearings and for full vetting of issues that includes the public's right to come and express their opinions and their views and their experiences. So I think that was important today, and I appreciate the public coming out. I still have a concern that we've not been able to locate the original anchoring legal document that gave certain rights and restrictions to St. Mary's as to how and what they can do on the property. It's not just about the built environment, it's not just about the buildings, it's about who and what and how the buildings get used on this property. All we have to go on is Exhibit A, which is this letter from Reverend Van Dorp. So I believe that it was Commissioner Pujo who asked Mr. Keikendal to see if there's some additional documentation. I don't know if staff is going to be inclined to pursue obtaining this documentation, but I think that it's appropriate for the city's due diligence to obtain whatever documentation St. Mary's has on actually how they've used the property, for whom, what purposes, what are the numbers. I mean, this is not uncommon with CUPs, and quite frankly, we spend a fair amount of time of, of rigor in obtaining documents and poring over compliance on almost everything we do. So it seems not only reasonable, but in line with how we typically operate, that we would want to try to align the assertions in Reverend Van Dorp's letter with any documentation, the archive, so to, so to speak, that St. Mary's has. Now, when I look at, going back to this, some of the descriptors of what the reverend has put in this letter as to his accounting of how St. Mary's has used the property, it goes beyond a seminary, in my opinion, not that I'm an expert on what happens at seminaries. However, this is a pretty broad description of many nonreligious activities, including the 12-step recovery programs that I mentioned, including summer programs, young adults, non-Catholics alike. So I think that St. Mary's has really stretched their use. It may still be appropriate within the original CUP. We don't know because we don't have that original CUP. So again, when we look at our job today and the job of the community development director, it's more than, well, we kind of think there's a similar use. It kind of looks like it's the same intensity of use. No, there's more rigor involved in a Level IV substantial conformance determination. That's why it's Level IV, not 1, 2, or 3. So I think that we owe it to both the policy and process we have in place. We owe it to the applicant to make sure when you buy the property, this is, this is going to be ironclad, that you have a really good approval in place, and there's no room for any kind of misinterpretation to come up between what was alleged to have occurred that applaud, that, that conformed to a 1962 document that is missing in action, and what you're going to get approval from the city, and I think we owe it to the community at large, the neighbors in particular, to try to close this gap or this delta of information. If in fact, the, if in fact St. Mary's was allowed to conduct 12-step recovering programs, I want to zero in on this, that to me is nearly identical with the use that Access Treatment Centers is proposing to provide on the property. So if, this is a big question, if it was acceptable and they were in conformance as opposed to out of compliance with a 1962 CUP, then I would say that I can line up the 12-step program, not everything else that was going on on the property for all these years, but certainly that alone, the 12-step program, is substance abuse, rehabilitation, treatment, support, et cetera, that to me is similar. Now, in terms of other ways of defining intensification of use, if in fact we could have documentation from the prospective property owner, the applicant, that the clients absolutely will not have their own automobiles on the property, that seems to me to reduce traffic congestion, to reduce traffic circulation- congestion, to reduce traffic circulation impacts, that's a positive. So I think that's a move in the right direction in terms of some neighbor concerns. We won't have buses, we won't have summer programs with lots of youth coming up and back on the property. These clients will be there for an appreciable period of time, not over a weekend, not a couple-night stay. So the back and forth off the property, the to and fro, should be lessened, should be reduced, the 20 to 30 days, I think Mr. Deacon, you mentioned, is kind of the typical period of time, the program duration. That, I think, is an improvement in terms of the impacts to the property and the neighbors Now, these extended periods of having this type of demographic, this type of client on the property does warrant very intensive, and I think you say seven days a week, I think it's 24, so you're going to have employees 24/7, seven days a week, attention and oversight. So to the neighbors' concern, and I know you want to be good neighbors, they want to feel comfortable with you being their neighbor, this is going to require tremendous vigilance on the part that the clients stay up there, they're not causing problems, I mean, we have this good neighbor policy, you know, which is, we're very sensitive to in the city of Santa Barbara, but it's very important for the right reasons. So I would certainly hope in a project description that you would provide our community development department, which to Ms. Pujo's point, we don't have, and we have your letter, I could pull descriptors or portions of the language out and make some assumptions about a project description, which would then completely describe all of the uses and the intensification of use on the property that is contained in your letter, but it's not synonymous with a project description. I don't know if our community development director will think that that's necessary, but I think when we're talking about all these gaps between a 1962 CUP, the document nowhere to be found, a letter from the current property owner representative, that's just an assertion about what's been going on the property, is it factual, is it not, we don't have backup documentation, and then your assertion in a letter as to how you're going to use the property, it's not quite as tight as I would like to see it, and I would feel most comfortable. However, I can see that the majority of my colleagues want to move this forward, and for the societal value that you will be providing, which is important to me, and I think is important to our community, I would like to see a way forward. So, you know, in closing, I'm going to leave it, we have to leave it to the community development director to make the final determination, but I think some pieces need to be pulled together to fully substantiate, with all due respect to our community development director, a full approval on a Level IV SCD. Thank you very much, and I wish you the best.
Thank you, my comments. So first, before any adequate determination, I feel, can be made by the city, we need a fully written and defined and detailed project description for what the uses will be from this point going forward. That description should include things such as the verbal description and the staff material information and attachments that the applicant has given in regards to what the treatment facility is, how many, length of stay, the state licensing, all of those things that we have either heard or seen in the staff report and its attachments. It should also include a clear definition of not only how many patients or visitors there will be, but what the cap on that number is, what's the not-to-exceed numbers that the applicant is proposing to live with on-site, what is the number on-site at any one time, how many employees combined, provide a safe cap that you can live with, because that is something that you can be held to in the future, and that would be the point. Whether or not the dwelling units will actually be retained on-site, because we didn't visit the dwelling units on the site visit, but what I understand is there are a few where they have like actual kitchen facilities in them and things like that. Question in my mind out there is what is their use going forward, going to be a statement that the actual church, you call it a chapel, I think it's pretty big, I would call it a church, but regardless of that, what is the use in the future? Is it going to be deconsecrated? Will services to the, any denomination or general public be allowed in the future in that, if it's not being deconsecrated? I think that the, what are the accessory uses to what you're providing? For example, a statement that the gymnasium is going to be accessory to the uses that you're describing, and not a new use in and of itself, which I believe you have stated. And then also, there was some indication verbally, at least I think, that there may be some fundraiser or temporary uses. You need to define those so the staff can review and see exactly what the scope and size and frequency of those things are going to be, and are they within what you would expect for the use of a facility like this, and how do they compare with what has been done in the past? Last...
Attorney Officer, we've had two meetings since we've been out and about, and nothing really to report. Couple consent items between the two, and I think three or four other items that were just very vanilla. Couple weeks ago, water commission, still nothing good to report on water supply status. We have now crested, what is, they call a historical five-year drought, and at least for the, all the western states, and in particular, southern California, we're chasing a seven-year drought, historical drought. So there's nothing on the horizon that would change that. Northern California, of course, has had a good amount of water this past winter, but the western states in general and southern California remain in the throes of a drought. One of the conundrums you're going to hear is that while there's plenty of water available in northern California to chase, to buy or get here, is that you can bring all you want now before hot weather gets here, but then you suffer a huge amount of evaporation in Lake Kachuma while you're storing it, or you can wait till later and then have a constraint on capacity from all the other people who want water as you get into the summer months and not be able to get the water. So they're proactively and imaginatively looking at ways to combat that. Lake Kachuma work is almost complete on relocating the barge pumping station. They have, they've been laying the new pipe, and then I think before the end of this month, they plan on moving the pump barge to its new location, and that's where it's going to end up staying. The significance of that is not really to get more water out of Lake Kachuma, although that's one of the considerations, but eventually, the amount of water in Lake Kachuma will not be available because there's a required amount of water to keep in the lake that is not allowed to be used, and it will simply serve a function as a conduit for water we bring from somewhere else into Lake Kachuma to then bring it to the south coast. Then finally, you will hear we continue to have problems with the completed recycling water function down at the plant, and not much is being talked about that other than the situation. I think there's some legal rumblings going on that was supposed to do 2.5 million gallons a day. It's currently producing between 3/4 and 1 million gallons a day. So now we're entering into some type of negotiations on who's at fault for the design and the inability to push that up. The customer base right now that's drawing that is not an issue, but as soon as the weather warms up, we will not be able to supply enough recycled water to our customer base based on historical needs. And they will be forced then to, we will be forced collectively rather than to use recycled water, we'll be either using or augmenting it with potable water. So if it rains like heck, I'll have better news next month, but I think we're, and I think we're also too, just to say, it's really bad, but our inventory and strategy right now is pretty good for the next year. We are protected and taken care of for the next year, but if the drought continues like it has, we have a growing deficiency in supply. If we're to the end of summer next year and do not have adequate rainwater this winter, then we will be tasked with some Herculean conservation choices, probably some changes in landscaping requirements, and that's even with D-SAL coming on on time, and even if recycling was pushed up to its capacity, it's just, we eventually run up against the wall of a lack of supply. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for that report, and thank you for your participation. You know, it's really important to be part of the group that's trying to follow and hopefully come up with some type of solutions, but thank you for that. Anybody else? Okay, it's First Thursday, it's always First Thursday when we have one meeting a month, I guess, no, we have two meetings this month. It is First Thursday, you have plenty of time to get ready for it, so enjoy the festivities, and we'll see you in two weeks. Thank you.